Started our meeting to order. And the first thing I have is to ask if anyone, anything needs to be added to the agenda at this time? No? Okay, then it's like that to approve the June twenty six, twenty twenty four agenda as submitted. Okay, and a second, second, okay, and all in favor of I? Okay, second, can I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting with the May twenty twenty two, twenty four meeting minutes? The pending deposit gift receipt, uh, gift report and this just to reports as submitted.
Sorry, no, and I second.
Chris and all in favor of I? opposed? No, okay. So we'll jump right in today. Thank you all for coming on it. It looks like the hottest day of the week here and in the middle of approaching what's July week and travel and all those kind of things. So appreciate everyone making it today. We have a completely full attendance today, which is really good at this time of year, I think. So first off, we have no one for public comment, right? Okay, so I asked for a report from Clay, I guess, for defense.
Good afternoon, everyone. On behalf of Ruth DeBoer, for the Friends of the Library, she sent a brief report that they have voted to new board members on Anne Bloomsburg and Chris Kane. What happened at their meeting at the beginning of the month? They're working on their calendar events for the next year. And this is, as I've mentioned before, their fiscal year now starts the same time of the rest of this is July one and instead of April one. We're all glad about that. But they they don't have the July meeting, but they'll meet again August seven. They had a wish to report they had a good year financially and once they pay their costs for the past year, we'll be able to make a larger donation to the library. We're excited about that. But that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Clay? Ruth was there. Ruth, Clay filling in for Ruth right now. Okay, Susan, we get you to your report for the foundation.
Thank you very much. It's been a remarkable year for the Richmond Public Library Foundation, due in no small part to individuals on the Library Board of Trustees who've been absolutely tremendous in their support of our efforts in support of Richmond Public Library. I also want to thank the Richmond Public Library Foundation Board for being active and for all of the boards and working more closely together this year. That's been really exciting. In addition to the nine hundred thousand dollar Mellon Grant we were awarded this year, we received over a hundred thousand dollars in additional grants to support efforts of Richmond Public Library. I want to thank everybody who gave individually, and if you haven't had an opportunity to do so, there are a few days left in this fiscal year. We are delighted to report that we received grants from the Richard, excuse me, the Richard S Reynolds Foundation this year, the Shaver Foundation and the Christman Family Foundation. All of those are significant and they are new grantors to the Richmond Public Library system. I'm currently working on the Jack R Anderson Foundation and I look forward to keeping you updated in that. Finally, we are pleased to announce the election of Don Treese Brown as the president of the foundation and he will be joined by Vice President Fran Bradford in the upcoming fiscal year. So we are exceedingly excited to welcome them to the executive team. And I also want to thank the board for their part in recognizing John Olm Schneider in his service to the, not only the foundation, but previously the Library Board of Trustees. That meant a lot to him. So thank you so much for doing that. And that's all I have today.
I'll interject the Shaver Foundation, new to the library, gave us fifty thousand dollars for children's program. And for us, that's a lot. When did this happen?
Last week.
You didn't tell me screaming?
So, and if I could just say a couple of things about Susan's report. I want to say that, you know, this is probably the biggest year in fundraising this library has ever seen. The Mellon Grant was a big part of it. But those grants she just talked about and the fundraising she just talked about is also surpasses other years that we've done. And not only that, so we've raised more money, more money than we've ever raised. We've also added new funders to the, to the list. That takes cultivating and finding new funding avenues is a big deal. And it's very challenging and took a lot of work. And I want to credit Susan and the foundation board and expert help from this board to help make that happen. So Chris and Susan and everybody at the foundation, everybody sitting in this table had a part in that. Not only did we, we raised more money, we, we built capacity and future funders, but we also built capacity in, in the in the membership of the foundation. We've added new members and found new champions to help us lead this effort. So those are three huge things that have happened in this fiscal year and I give Susan all of the credit for.
Absolutely.
We would have not been able to do this without her, her leadership and hard work and dedication to our library system. So I would like to give her just around the ball.
Okay, let's move on Scott to yours admin report.
All right, I'm very happy to report I found out this morning that RippleCon had over three hundred and fifty visitors and participants in the program and our summer and, you know, that was Keystone Event of our summer reading program. So we are having a big summer reading program and our youth services department under the leadership of Beth Morris and just the capacity that the foundation has been able to provide and the board has been able to support and we just have a lot going on.
I went to RippleCon and it was amazing. Little kids loved it. The, you know, I'm too cool for school tweens and teens were there. There were workshops, there were costumes, there were zines. I mean, Beth and her team did a spectacular job.
Right. Yeah, it's, so last year was the start. They've made it even better. I'm sure next year will be even bigger. And I just want to comment that it's based on our mascot that the foundation helped us get a few years ago. And so he is our brand and becoming even more popular as a recognized emblem of our organization. And I have to say, I haven't seen many children run away in fear and terror from him. Most people really want to hug on Ripple and we've had some wonderful mascots, employees who've worn the outfit and just done a great job. So you know, it was eight years ago that we, about six years ago that we decided we were going to get a mascot and we were one of the few public libraries in the state who has its own mascot. That's not some sort of thing that was crafted. And with lovely intention, this is an official mascot and we've been able to build the brand and he appears on or they appear on all the different promotional materials and it's been very successful. So it's just appropriate and nice that we have a whole, he has his own convention. So and three hundred and fifty kids, visitors showed up. So that's a big deal. And it's also, you know, we have, Richmond has Galaxy Con, but Galaxy Con is about two hundred dollars a ticket for the course of a weekend. This is an event that has people who show up that is part, that are part of that or part of that event that it's free to our, our users to come and visit. And again, it appeals to all kinds of folks. So it's hitting a niche, it's promoting the library and it's connecting our users to our resources and our, and our events. So it's, it's just great. So hats off to our youth services department and all of the folks who made that happen. So RippleCon is big.
Do a lot of people dress up? Yes.
Oh, yeah.
And the costumes are unbelievable. And then there's workshops on how to make costumes and experts there. And the kids were all, okay, do I use this? Do I need, and experts on makeup to help you fix? I mean, it was just such a pleaser for those creatives. And we're creative city. Yeah, I, I was delighted every bit of it.
Yeah. And the great part is, is most of the people who present there, we're not having to pay a lot to get them there. They're happy to come and do it. You know, we have this group from the Star Wars, there's people who have Star Wars outfits. They're the, I can't remember the name of. Well, they're, they're, there's a group and they have their own number and it's, and it's officially kind of authorized by the Lucasfilm people. So their costumes have to be correct and they get graded on them and they can't have like an official Lucas endorsement and be a part of this oven or group without, without having Lucas sign off on it. And so the costumes you'll see there are very off like authentic looking. It's almost like you're on the set of one of those Disney Star Wars events and they really add some oomph to it. And then you get all of the graphic artists who come and there are, this year I believe we had someone who helped with, last year we had somebody who colored, but this year we had somebody who I think she was a voice of one of the manga or anime sort of things and I had no idea it was as big as it was. So I, if you're if you're curious about those things, RippleCon is definitely something to kind of go and get exposure to it. So.
And this was an incredibly hot day that anybody left their house. Had to have a good reason to go.
And thankfully it was in the big main library, which was climate controlled. So it's, I don't know if you've all been to festivals in the summer, June and July in Richmond. It's fun. We have beautiful festivals, but you just melt. And so I'm, I think it's just great. And attract folks, so. Happy to share that all with you. I just want to quickly go through the stats. We're coming to the end of our fiscal year. I think you saw on the, on our pages, our statistical report here. I was hopeful, I was really hoping that circulation across the board would have surpassed all of twenty three by now, but we're very close in some areas. I think we'll definitely surpass twenty three with our twenty four numbers. The thing that is significant on the circulation, I'm on page eleven is if you look at e-content. Last year for the whole year, we had two hundred and twenty seven thousand circs. This year we're at three forty two. And I think we're, we're, we're looking at what that's telling us, but it's telling us we're making investments in the right places and in terms of collections and resources and also that people are just gobbling it up. So it is kind of a changing, it's, it's a change in library. So we still have folks using physical books, but they're also gravitating towards the electronic books. And so I, I had a discussion with our collection management person and she's convinced that people are accessing our books the way they access their shopping. So if you, you know, you go to Amazon and you thumb through things and you start selecting things, that's what's happening with our apps. So people are either going to our online catalog or our, or our mobile app, which the mobile app is up and working. I hope you all have updated your mobile app and it has a new logo on it. So they're using their app to find it and it is taking you right to our electronic resources and you can literally have it in about a minute. So that is, has been a change in our organization and one we're getting used to. So but that number is telling us that's where people are going to. So that investment in that is paying off and also trying to make sure that people are able to find it is really important. In terms of like programming, I'm pleased to see that we're not quite done yet, but we're passing numbers that we had in twenty three. So we're at twenty seven thousand attendance. And last year we were at twenty three thousand. I'll be pleased to see where that ends up at. So people are still coming to us and visiting us in terms of programs. I think that's all, I can speculate that that is a product of longer hours, libraries open on Sundays. I know that only happened mid-year, but that I think is where we're seeing those dividends. Door count, if you look at door count on page fifteen, we're at four hundred and seventy nine already. We've already surpassed last year by, by seventy thousand. So I am hopeful that we're going to cross the five hundred thousand in door count. So a half a million visitors have come to our libraries this last year. These are all statistics that I'm hoping that we will use in the coming months as we advocate for our case. New patron cards, we're up on those. We're, I'd love to see that number crack twenty thousand in terms of new patron cards. I don't know if we'll get there. But we have passed, surpassed last year. So adding new users is really important. And this fall, we have Lisa Christman here. She's helping lead a committee. She helped lead our committee on National Library Week and she's helping put together our, our annual program on library card signup month, which is in September. So we're going to do a big push to really promote library card signup. This is something the board brought to my attention that was important to you all. So staff and I are stepping up to make sure that we raise that. We want to add more users to our, to our, to our library. And then computer usage on page sixteen, I hope you'll notice that. We're at a hundred and eighty eight thousand. So that still remains strong. And it's, I think it's evolving in terms of that. So if you look at where a lot of the usages in that chart, you'll see it's a lot happening on our wifi access points. Less people using our workstations and more people using our wifi. So people are bringing their devices in and accessing either on their mobile device or their, or their computer. So it's, I'm curious to see how those numbers follow, but we, we still need to continue to make that investment. And then lastly on page seventeen, I want to point out, if you look at, this is our report from our technical services and this kind of details what we're putting into the collection and also what we're taking out. It also shows you our investments and, and where we're putting various materials. You may have noticed on FY twenty four, we've discarded almost thirty three thousand items. That is probably six times more than we did last year. So what had happened was we have not weeded our collection the way we were supposed to. And so in the past two years, we have made discoveries that we need to catch up. And so our weeding is, has increased issues. We've gotten rid of a lot of stuff that it's no longer being used, is obsolete. And so that's where it's gone. And instead of going in the dumpster, we've got in an agreement with the Friends of the Library, they have first pass over the items that are going out the door. So they can put them in the book sale and use them for funds. And then once they're done, they're done reviewing, they'll go into a bin. We have an agreement with Ingram Books. They have a program called Thrift Books. So if you're ever on the mezzanine, you'll see these giant pallets with big cardboard boxes on it. So we can put those, the books that we don't, the friends don't want, that have been discarded from our collection into thrift books. Ingram will send a eighteen wheeler to come and pick up these pallets and then they take them and they do a pass over them. And if there are books that are that they could sell, they will sell them and give us a credit for them that we can use in our purchase of books from Ingram. And then what they don't use gets recycled. So they will pulp the books and turn it into some sort of filler for something. So it used to be for many years, they would go in the dumpster and go to landfill because we had no place that could recycle our books. So that's one thing that we've been doing. So our books are well loved and I know it looks like a lot, but in general in libraries that are healthy and successful, for every book we put in, we really are often taking a book off the shelf and that got behind in our system. So when you look at that number, it may be shocking to see, oh, they've gotten rid of thirty three thousand books last year. Well, we hadn't gotten rid of hardly any books for the previous twenty years. So we were way far behind. And so what we're trying to do is make sure that all of the books on our shelves are earning their keep and they're circulating and they're up to date and they're what our patrons wants. If, if a book isn't doing that, it's not earning its keep. It unfortunately has to go. It's like your garden. Some stuff needs to go. You want to keep it all, but you can't necessarily do that. So we got behind in our weeding. So that's where we are at. So that's just a, I just want to do a quick statistical overview because we're nearing the end of the fiscal year. In July, you'll see the final numbers and those numbers will be part of what we want to, want to use for our advocacy for budget and all of the other things that we do. It's basically our scorecard. So are there any questions on that? They've been doing pretty well. Is there, I don't know if we have that listed on here. So that's probably something that we need to add and I can look into that. But I know that they're usually being checked out and they're usually being used inside. It depends on which branch. Some of the branches circle a bunch of them and others hardly circle any. So.
We have many problems with people not bringing them back.
We've had some, but nothing severe. So there's, there's been a couple that have gone missing, but nothing that has been dramatic like it's not like half of them are gone or anything like that. It's, they're, they're being used and, you know. The one thing that's a statistic that we're not reporting in here that I'd like to start reporting next year is meeting room usage. So meeting rooms and study rooms, I want to get that included in here because that's a number that we need to follow because it shows usage of our buildings in a different way. That's something we're not reporting now. So look for that in, in coming reports and it's, it's something that we need to have in terms of facilities to advocate for adding more space to our building because or changing the space in some of our buildings so that we can accommodate study rooms and meeting rooms or bigger meeting rooms. So.
So starting July.
Mm-hmm, yep. Looking to do that.
That'd be a good number to know.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Would that glue turn, turn down? Would people couldn't get around?
I don't know. I can look at that. I, we'll begin by getting like number of meetings that we booked. Uses, that would be a good start and then we can look and see what, how many we have to turn away. So we're out in the ranches and this is the only location that has a study, study room. They have a meeting room and a study room. I don't have any other branch libraries that have study rooms and we only have limited study rooms at the main library. So. Something, go ahead.
Would it be possible when you start this, if we could also see what there is at each library? Because off the top of my head, I, I don't know what is available at each library for, for people to request.
Yeah, so I can definitely do that. What, we've done a really nice job on our website. So when you go to our website and you want to book a room, it has every location and I believe there are images of every location and, and, and we use this platform called LibCal to book it. So you go in and you, you can reserve it all electronically. So it'll tell you a description of the meeting room with a picture and how many chairs. And then the study room is a separate thing. So, but I, we can definitely do that if that's something you want to see.
Maybe you could do just a one sheet summary for us.
Okay.
Again, I might mention that scheduling is one of the things that makes it a little tricky to know whether there was contention for the rooms. Because there's not a tracking that I know of in there. I mean, that you can't tell that somebody looked and said, I wanted to use the room on Thursday night, but it's already used.
I'm not sure, but, but we.
From what I've looked at, it didn't seem, maybe it does. But yeah, I mean, you can see the schedule. So I was going to mention two quick things on the stats. One, your electronic, I think in your verbiage in the, none of the actual numbers in here, but in your description of it, that the audio, audiobooks jumped up. There was substantial portion of that, which really sort of surprised me. Can you sort of think that's?
I don't know.
But apparently it's, I, I didn't realize how big that was. That just surprised me.
Oh, it's huge. Yeah, I, I think the, the podcasting, so many people are listening to podcasting and there are so many different podcasts out there that people are gravitating now if they weren't audiobook users before, they're becoming so now. And just the ability to just find it and put it on your device and then it tracks so well and then it talks to your car radio. That's always been kind of one of the big drivers. So when we had hate to say this, back in the day when we had cassette tapes and we had books on, books on tape. People's cassette tapes, when we transitioned to CDs and we had to move to CDs, then we had to get books on CD and that drove it. And so what we saw is more people wanting books on CD and then the books on tape went away. And now we, I think very, very, we're seeing fewer and fewer people wanting anything on CD because they don't want to carry it. And their phone now talks to their, like car or their Bluetooth speakers in their homes or just their earbuds. I mean, how often, everyone's wearing earbuds. So it's a huge driver. And the electronic audiobooks are, are much more expensive. I know in our product Hoopla, which works a little bit different than Libby, it's a downloadable and you have it and they charge us a lot more for those downloads in your Hoopla download than they do for a book or a graphic novel or even a video. But I, I don't even know what we call it now. When we do streaming, they stream stuff. So there is that difference, but it's hugely popular.
The other thing I was going to mention, the printed materials added isn't, obviously it's not, nothing close to the discarded. And I think your comment was that it's actually been a slow swing for publishing. You mentioned that, that there hasn't been as much so that while we may be a little bit off on our purchases, it's not been a funding issue as much as it's been a waiting for the next things to come out.
You know, the publishing is always like, somebody's going to put a book out and they get it delayed, they get it delayed. So and then in the past few years, we've had problems with, they've had problems with like paper and distribution and just different things. So we're still, if you'll notice, we're still adding printed materials at a much higher rate than electronic materials. And if you compare that to previous years, we're, you know. And that's definitely a clear reflection of investment through the book budget. So I don't know if that answers your question.
No, no, I mean, I, it wasn't really a question, it's much pointing out that you, you also had that in what you wrote up, that I think when, when we look at that budget and we see, maybe we're spending below it. We, we rarely seem to, I mean, occasionally we'll get ahead on a monthly basis, but we stick with it on an annual.
Yeah.
But when we're a little bit behind there, it's just interesting that part of that is because you just didn't have things you wanted to buy right now.
Yeah.
So anyway, I just, I thought that's very positive that we seem to be able to get what we want right now.
Yep.
Okay.
We mentioned like CDs, you know, used to be able to check on DVDs and VCR tapes. Is there any demand now for any video material? I mean, so many streaming things up here now. I just wonder.
So. Yeah, so for us, I don't know that music CDs are as popular as DVDs. DVDs are still popular, especially in certain libraries, especially in communities that don't have access to streaming or can afford all the different subscriptions that you have on your streaming services. So those are still very much used. The challenge that's happening with DVDs is a lot of digital content that used to be on DVD, isn't going to DVD anymore. It's just going to streaming. So there are things that are, just aren't even coming out on DVD and, and users are wanting us to have it. But we can't get it because it's not going to that. I think the streaming services for music have just transformed the way music is listened to for libraries. It used to be we had DVDs and before that, I can even say we had records and cassette tapes and CDs. All of that is gone now because Spotify has essentially killed that because it's a free service and you can pick and build playlists. And so that has just changed the way people are, are kind of consuming music. And there are still those out there who want to own it, but those are getting fewer and fewer and it's the way you own music anymore has just changed radically in the last ten years. So I'm not seeing, and I don't think we're seeing a demand for music the way we once did. So that is something that's really going away. I anticipate over time DVDs will do the same thing because the streaming will become ubiquitous and freer and platforms will start streaming it with ad content in it. So it'll become more like television on demand, which I think is what, if you go to YouTube, I think that's starting to happen. But that is changing formats that we used to have that were very popular, that circulated that I'm not seeing anymore and, and we can look at it more with staff, but that's what I'm hearing from our collection management team.
I mean, do you see any, anything in the future with the libraries having video content, you know, people can check out, you know, like I said, I know there's streaming services everywhere, but I'm just wondering is that something libraries are interested in doing?
It's a, it's a really good question because you remember we have the TV station, right? So like we've been able to offer people that opportunity to create their own content. And we're, you know, the, the equipment is aging. We're in process right now with the city to discuss replacing that equipment, digital equipment. But it's, we're not seeing a demand for it. And maybe it's because the equipment isn't quite there or we're not running something right, but it's something we're looking at. But we're, I'm not, we're not seeing like the demand increase radically for that because I think people are just like they've shifted in their music tastes from ownership and CDs and records and cassettes to a streaming service like Spotify. Um, I, I think the video stuff, I. I, I, I'm not, I don't know that. I think that's going to continue. I speculate it's going to continue on the path of the way Spotify has kind of changed music. So I don't know if that is something we're going to continue to do or, or how it will change. You know, but we have streaming services through Hoopla, so you can go there and download six films or television and kind of it's. It's not quite Netflix or any of the subscription services, but it has, it has content there. Um, so it's not Acorn TV, but.
Do people know that, that they can record? I think I'm, I'm thinking about, you know, all those empty channels, um. Local broadcast channels that people could have their own TV show on. Does anybody know they could come to the library and film them? I mean, you know, cause I, I didn't know that.
Yeah. We try and promote it and the city tries to promote it on their platforms as well, so. I just don't know if the demand is there or is going to continue, but we're going to continue. Uh, the city is going to continue to invest in the equipment and so we'll still provide the equipment as long as. The franchise fees and stuff come back from the city, so.
So it's a service the city wants.
So. It's a services the city provides through the franchise license with Comcast. So Comcast has a franchise license, so as part of that con, that con. It's part of that licensing privilege. They give the city funds off of that contract. So there's a, there's a public access channel. There's a civil, I, I don't know if that's, it's uh like, it's like a government channel. And then there's an education channel. So they have those three channels and they have equipment and they have broadband, broad. Broadband or broadcast access on those three channels. Um, so. That's part of the, as long as the franchise fee keeps going, I guess those funds will still be available to support that kind of access to. That spectrum of broadband. So.
That was updated next, seven years ago.
It's been about six years. We've had the plan, had, had the channel, um, and we're in the process of trying to get the equipment updated because it's very. It's falling apart. If it's old, so. We're trying to get it replaced.
So would the library pay for that or just?
Oh no, the city, that would come out of the franchise. I mean, for the city would pay for that.
Definitely do it.
Yeah. Yeah. I think that's concludes my report.
Hey, thank you. Any questions Scott beyond that? Garrett, if you could talk a little bit about advocacy?
Hey, everyone.
Congratulations.
Appreciate that. A lot of work ahead for sure. Um, from an advocacy perspective, I'm sorry that wasn't here to make it to the last meeting, cause I was. In the throes of RPS things, but. Um, things I wanted to just highlight on is that. While I'm happy that we've seen some growth, I'm disappointed in the level of growth we saw in the budget. Um, from the internal conversations that I was having uh with our city council representatives, there was a play that we could have seen more money. Um, but I think once the facilities report came out from, or at least the initial report came out from each public schools related to. The historical lack of investment and upkeep of our facilities. Um, that's why there was a significant portion of the budget that was added onto RPS. Um, because quite frankly, several of our school buildings are almost near collapse if I be completely blunt. Um, so that has not stopped. Obviously the work we needed to do here. Um, so I've already started having conversations with school, with school representatives and also our city council representatives. About what our initiatives need to be and, and, and building stronger ties with uh the public library board. Um, they are very excited about that opportunity. Uh, started to actually give them a little bit more data and just be like, hey, let's sit down, let's talk. And we've had some really good conversations related to what that can look like as we move forward. Um, I've sat down to talk with Catherine Jordan, I've sat down to talk with Krista and I. And now Sarah Abu Baker is going to be new city council representative for the fourth district, hopefully my counterpart. Um, and there's many different ways I think we're going to be able to, to get what we need moving forward. Um, so I just say that the advocacy work is going to continue. Um, obviously, uh, we will, uh, my plan is that next week you'll get a communication that you can put out last to all of your representatives. Um, related to just where we are thanking them uh for their contributions in this last budgetary season. But it's going to be very direct and where, where we want to go.
Okay.
Um, because I think, you know, we're not going to make an ass as, as I think Bill mentioned uh in the last board meeting. Uh, but we have to be very clear of like, this is where we need to go to, to. Address the, the, the growth in our, and, and, and people wanted to come to our libraries. I mean, I was just at Westover Hills and people are excited about it. It got to be Danielle and she's, she's fantastic, by the way. Um, but. We want to be able to, to show them that we are moving in the right direction, but we'll need the money to be able to address the spike and, and the, and the desire for programs. Um, the, you know, desire for meeting spaces. I mean, all those things are going to be critically important as we move forward. And we can't do that without money. Um. So I just want to say that that work is definitely underway. You'll receive that communication so you can get that out as you need to, to your people. Um, one thing I'm going to start doing just from an advocacy perspective is I'm going to set up monthly meetings. With our city council representatives, um, just. Because of my new role, um, and we're going to start talking about like how we can build those ties in. So for an example, um, I was doing a tour with Sarah recently at. Um, at South Hampton Elementary School. Um, and you know, we have to meet their librarian there. She's phenomenal. She's been at RPS forever. Uh, and she was like, I, this year I really want to make sure that I can get the kids down to Westover Hills Library, get them their library cards. And I was like, oh, just you wait. You can absolutely do that. Um, so you know, there's definitely a desire to, to build a stronger partnership. So. One thing is going to be on our agenda item for our July first meeting for uh the school board is to talk about how we can build better partnerships. Uh, with the public libraries, um, and making sure that every child in RPS receives a library card. And we build better systems of how that can actually happen. Um, so definitely want to talk about what we can do in September. Uh, related to that, um, because I know they're, they're trying to figure out their calendars over the summertime right now. Um, so I'm excited about being able to see that investment and seeing our, our patron cars go higher. Uh, which will then also help us with our case to say like, listen, everybody now is going to the, going to these libraries. There's, there's no excuse why we. Should not see the investments that we need to see um to help us grow.
Thank you. Any questions uh for Garrett at this point? And I. Chris sort of alluded to it. I think everybody, just, just to the point, I think everybody knows, but Garrett uh was pointed to the school board. Fill the interim term and you're running in November for the. For the permanent, right? Okay, we, we're really looking forward to that.
There's uh two opponents, um. There's two opponents, I'll leave. But I'm excited to continue the work.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, and this has been one of the things that we have tried for so long with the library, the connection to the school. And we have, I mean, we have worked, I know in the time that I've been on the board, effort after effort and you know, I think. You coming on Sharon was one opportunity that got us closer. Uh, and having, you know, having Garrett, you know, it just assures that we can make it happen. Last, so that's great.
And Bannon has pretty much confirmed, yeah, that um Garrett. There is no conflict with Garrett being on our board and the school board, even after he's in there in the full, full-time elected uh spot. So we. We hope that Garrett will be able to squeeze us in. Um, we've always said we wanted a. School board member to come to the meetings. We've been inviting them for years. Um, well, he's more inclined to come if he's a member, so. I think that's a good thing for all of us, so. Okay, um, I don't have anything particularly on the chair report. I think things are just going beautifully, um. Chris uh from, we don't have a report from Chris, if she'd like to talk about. The, the summer program has been the big focus right now and it's just gotten off to a wonderful start. Uh, the staffing. I was very impressed to see the staffing that, that we managed to get for it and it really grew a lot just from the May meeting. I mean, we, we've had a lot of success in there.
Yeah.
Uh, for both funding, obviously, and also finding the right people. So, um, I think we, we should have uh. Just very successful summer and um. I'd be moving on into the, the fall with lots of new initiatives and things to, to work out for the city as far as funding and whatnot. Um. Garrett and Scott, anything you all want to talk about in finance?
Uh, just that we're winding down. If you look on page eighteen, that report, we're at about ninety percent. Uh, we've spent through most of our lines. You'll see that we're still behind in um. Uh, personnel expenditures because of the hiring lag that we experienced.
Yeah.
But we're going to hit our overall target in terms of like what our budget is, so. Um, just wrapping things up and winding things down, just like the statistical report. Um, for um, we're doing great, so. Um. In July, you'll see uh and the FY twenty-five uh. Budget outline with the accounts and the descriptions. Um, you'll see the increase and if you recall, it's the investment this year is, is going to be on um. The four and a half percent pay increase that becomes effective July one. Um, there's some benefit increases that will uh take place for personnel. Um, and there is going to be an investment in computers, so. Uh, the city has authorized uh an investment of a hundred and fifty thousand to replace public service computers, so we'll be. In the process of trying to replace as many public workstations as we can over the next six months. So we're already starting to select those.
This is. An unimportant question. Uh, but are computers run Microsoft two thousand seven?
Know that, so we're on. Some locations are still stuck on like nine, I think.
Okay.
Um, and there's. I forget what the new version operating system is. It was ten and now I think it's eleven.
Okay.
So, um. Some of the machines, anyway, so there's hardware and software demands and requirements that we're trying to meet. We also have something that's a security software that we have to install on all of our PCs. Because our, our public workstations are not like the workstations you have at home. We don't allow people to save bookmarks or. Or um. Uh, leave their documents on the desk or if someone's doing their taxes online, we don't want to let people go back and do that. So we have this software called Deep Freeze that. Essentially uh protects the hard drive from any temporary saves and is supposed to clean between users. Um, it's a, it's a extra piece that has to get installed on all the computers. So that's another added cost when we, when we purchase. Uh, a workstation. So workstation doesn't just include the computer, it's the workstation and the software and the. Protection software for, and then it all has to be run through DIT, so. Um, and it's uh really a, a challenge to trying to make all of those things talk together and play nicely. I'm sure you've all downloaded an application to your phone and all of a sudden your phone starts to run slow. And then things that used to work don't work. So we have the same issues with trying to. Imagine like having a computer at your house that you let all your neighbors come over and use. It's kind of like that, so. Um. We have to be very deliberate and careful when we, when we uh. Put in uh public workstations, but this year we'll have a hundred and fifty thousand to replace a lot of our. Workstations that are between three and five years old. So hopefully over the course of the next year, we'll be able to um. Fix a lot of the locations that have old computers or slow computers and we're, we're prioritizing that and that should roll out in the coming weeks.
That's great.
So. Um, so those are the big, kind of big ticket items. There's also, I believe, funding in there to add more. Uh, cameras to our, our library system, so. Uh. Surveillance cameras on the outsides of our building and insides of our building and integrating that. The city is making a bigger investment in uh security cameras. Um, and, and they help after the fact. They, they, I think they're somewhat of a deterrent, but I don't know that they're the. The super deterrent that a lot of people think they are. So those are things that'll be coming in FY twenty-five and um. Uh, so. July one, the advocacy begins again.
Sure.
What's going on with like the multimedia products and magazines?
So it, it appears as though that those are over budget. Um, some of that is um encumbered versus actual. So when we. So some of those funds are, have not been expended, so it makes it appear as though it's over the budget. So in terms of that, at the end of the day, if you look at the bottom, the bottom line here at ninety percent. We're still in good shape in terms of our overall budget because funds will be reallocated out to balance that out. And then next year we'll make adjustments in our, in our budgeting to make sure that we try and get closer to those percentages.
And have the prices gone up?
No, it's, it's just some of it is like purchase lag or increases. It's a, it's a little bit of both. Yep, it's a good question.
Okay, um. Janet, would you like to talk about facilities?
Sure. Um, we, Gail and I and Susan had a meeting with Scott. And he. Let a fire under us to um. Do some kind of a. A branch report. Similar to the two thousand nine report, but a much. Small or specialized look at our branches. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
We're not going to try to do that entire document.
Just an update.
Yeah.
Right, because we have done a lot of things to the branches, but. We all know that. You're all too small, so um. He gave us marching orders to get this done. By October. Go girl, yeah. So my response to him was, we'll give us a timeline.
Mm hmm.
So we're waiting on the timeline to see.
Right.
So he's. Reached out to general services.
Yeah, so July one, the city is adding a new department and they're calling it a general services administration group, so. Uh, the state of Virginia's had a general services division for many, many, for. I don't know, as long as the state's been around, I guess. Um, and so the city will adopt that. And so a general services group will really kind of address. Uh. FFNE, which is fixtures, furnishings, uh, equipment. Um, and buildings. So it'll, right now in the city of Richmond, that's being managed by. There's a group called Capital Projects and then there's Small Capital Projects and then DPW is the one responsible for it. So there's like. A couple different heads doing this and no one's really looking at the full picture. So this will overlay. A department that will look at maintenance needs, building needs. And address those things that like. Furnishings, fixtures and equipment that kind of fall between the cracks. You know, I, I don't know how many times I've had things come to the department level that should be a. Like a need that the city should address, a maintenance or a building issue. Well, there's nobody to turn to, so it gets pushed back on the department. So that's why Cheryl is doing things like. Tree maintenance or landscaping. Well, I believe when this general services group gets established, they will start addressing those needs and it will no longer be our concern to handle that. I think that makes good sense because there's economy of scales. There are uh. Primary points of contact now, instead of having three points of contact, you just have one. That I think, I think that makes a lot of sense. I pray for them that we can get it out. So they hired a fellow from the state of Virginia. His name is Joe D'Amico. He ran the general services department at the state of Virginia. His latest uh success was building the general assembly, which I believe was a billion dollar project. Um, and it had its challenges, but hey, the building is done and they're still going. So I think he will be able to bring some. Structure and organization. That's on the big state level down to our locality. And um. I think it will help us address some of our problems. So I'm getting a meeting with him after he kind, after this, so this department formally starts July one. Um, I'm going to get a meeting with him and talk about some of our needs. So. In this report card that I talked to Janet about, in this. Report that we want to do, I'm kind of thinking of it as a report card. Where we um ask general services or Joe's team to. Can we have a report on all of our buildings? So what year was it built? How do you assess the HVAC? What are some of the challenges with the plumbing and electrical? All the FFNE things that they will be responsible for. I'd love to have a report card that says, hey. You haven't purchased furniture for this building in twenty years. I bet it's worn out. So how do we get on a schedule to replace that? So I think he'll be able to help us prepare that report, which is information that the facilities committee needs. And then if we can get some help on like future forecasting of. What should our libraries be? So let's look at the data around our library. So. That would be a part of the report card too. So we know that, okay, the neighborhoods around west of, west end are growing. So we may need to, there's formulas out there that say, okay, for this much population and this much vicinity around the library. You need this many square feet of library to do the things that you need. I believe those numbers are out there, so we can prepare a report card that says, hey. Uh. West End is uh five thousand square feet. Gosh, we really need a ten thousand square feet building and we'd have some data to support that. Some of that was done in the two thousand and nine report. Again, that's why we want to update it. So. This is all part of it. And then I asked the facilities committee, I said, you're going to have to talk to people. We're going to have to do some surveys. We're going to have to go out in the community and find out. You know, what are people saying? Do they really want study rooms? Do they want meeting rooms? Tell us. Because then we can say, wow, West End really wants to have a bunch of meeting rooms. Or a bunch of study rooms, so. Uh, this is what we can then. Put at the feet of general services and say, this is what we're seeing. So then when those opportunities present themselves that. Maybe we can, maybe the post office moves behind us and we can buy that property and it's. Double the footprint of this building and put a forty thousand square foot building up there. We would have the data to that. I'm just talking here, but those are the kind of opportunities that could present themselves. So if we can have this report card that has data and projections and just this kind of tells the temperature of the library in terms. So if we can have this report card that has data and projections and just this kind of tells the temperature of the library in terms of our facilities. Fixtures, equipment and just buildings and grounds. I think that will help us advocate. And answer those.
I'll make a suggestion. Because that's who I am. We were expecting. We have new council coming in, a new mayor coming in. Everything we write should educate them and compel them. To invest in the library. Now it has to be true and accurate. I have no problem with honest reporting. But I would encourage us to write a document that is educational. I don't want to use marketing because it's not marketing. I think the case says it itself, but compels people. To make. So not a report card like here's the facts. Just a little step forward. Here's the fact and here's why it's important.
Here are the needs. At some level, really stress those needs. And I think that ties in. What we've been talking about after meeting with. folks down at City Hall. I guess Sabrina is handling a lot of that. But as far as that idea that. Instead of saying, okay, let's plan out expansion of each library. Let's understand that the libraries have these needs and look for things as they become available. So that we don't walk past.
If we can get it all fine, but I think that's really unlikely.
That is unlikely. It's more of a, okay, we know this one needs another four thousand square feet. We know Belmont needs another eight thousand, whatever. And as something pops up.
Right.
In those areas or as people are looking at funding, you know, new developments going in and so on, that it ties to that. So I think you absolutely right.
To what Scott said. We always want to tell the truth. I mean, that's why we have trust with the people we. We represent, we work with. At the same time, we have to make sure the voice of the community is there. If the community does not have study rooms in their library and they need it. This is the time to say it. If the community doesn't want to go to a dark place, they want to go to a friendly. I mean. We exist to serve them.
The one thing I would say about that is. That right now, the library system here. Compared to our locale, the surrounding localities, really does an awful lot. With a very small amount of money, facilities. So so we've got, if you if you're looking to what should we have? It is an enormously large lift to get to that. So we're we're looking at moving in increments to keep improving. But I I mean, I think Scott and his team. Really manage to to punch above their weight consistently. And our, that's even as far as the buildings. They use them well. I think the amount of. If you look at how many times our rooms are used, for example. They're busy. You know, we we can see that we don't have a lot of excess capacity anywhere sitting. So. But we don't want to paint too gloomy a picture either. To the council.
That's why I think it should be.
It's an encouraging, right. It's an encouraging picture. Exactly.
Encouraging you to do the next. Be positive.
Exactly.
It is a little bit of marketing, but. Not a bad thing. Not bad.
Just telling us.
Yeah, we're marketing the city all the time. The city's marketing itself all the time.
Really got to be number one in the.
Yeah.
Okay, any other thing Janet, Gail, anybody?
I just want to show you guys a quick, in your packet, there's a screening Richmond Public Libraries and I have a little overview of it. Because it was approved by the U D C. A couple of weeks ago. So if I can bring it up. You all seeing that?
Yes.
All right. So this is the packet that went to the U D C and it. Shows you. What the. Concept is for the Ginter Park Library Project. So this will be the sixth of our stormwater landscaping mitigation. Projects and it is. As the article says, the information provided in the packet says itself. You know, it's a collaborative effort where we're going to change the River Association, Department of Public Utilities. And the community to design better spaces for. That captures stormwater mitigation, but also beautify the our library and locations and. Our interpretation and demonstration of what kind of. Plants you should plant to do that and really just do something. So this first page is existing conditions of where we're at on. Like in Gitter Park and you'll see Brook Road is here. Can you all see my little? Yeah, this is the building here and then you see this giant parking lot. I like how our our. You look here, it says big ugly parking lot. Landstate park that's really. Done some done a nice job of telling the story. This is where we're at and as we go forward, the next page is the. What what things will kind of look like. Once they demo some areas and what we're putting in in terms of file retention. So you'll see in. This would be right here is the northwest corner of the lot. So. Right now there's some bushes and trees here. This will become a bio retention area, which will probably capture the rainwater coming off the parking lot. Then there's another bio retention area in this corner. And then the biggest most dramatic change will happen on what I would call the front yard of our library that faces Brook Road here. So this area right here will be changed quite a bit. And we'll have to make some sacrifices. So if you go by Ginter Park, there's a giant magnolia tree here that's really getting close to the end of its days. And there's a couple of other large trees that will be coming down as part of this process. So one of the things that we're doing in terms of like being. Cognizant of of that concern of trees coming down is. We're hoping to find a milling company that'll be able to take that magnolia tree and carve it up and. Magnolia wood unfortunately can't be used exteriorly because it's kind of too soft of wood, but apparently. Woodworkers and people who work with wood, they would love to get a hold of the magnolia tree. So we would trade lumber with a milling company. So we would give them that. Fine magnolia interior wood and then they would give us. Hardwoods that we could use outside cedar or something like that we that we could use on outdoor structures and I'll show you those in just a moment. But you see that they'll put a swale in here, which will kind of capture water coming off the building and ideally. This site will capture a hundred percent and slow a hundred percent of the water coming off the building to the James. So that's the whole point of all these projects is if we can slow the water going to the to the James. And collect some of the impurities that appear in pollution that appears in that water, that that pollution isn't going into the James and makes it much better for all of us. So this is kind of the intermediate. And then if we go down to the spinal drawing. This shows you how, yes, we've taken down a couple of big trees, but we've probably tripled the number of trees and. Bushes that will go on the on the property. So we'll be adding a whole line of trees along this west west side of the building. The north side of the building and then along Brook Road, you'll see some trees that'll be in the tree row there. And then in this this area, we're going to be creating some outdoor programming spaces so that. Would that I talked about that would be going, you know, we'll we'll be trading with a milling company would go to build a pergola here. We'd add some. Some permeable pavers here. So more rainwater would be mitigated from the James. We'd add more trees on. Believe this is where is this road that's on the south side of. West West Road. Yep. So. If you look, if you remember the first image. And we go to the last image. So this is existing conditions. This is what it'll look like when they're done. It's going to be quite a dramatic improvement, probably. Of the projects that we've done, this is going to be the biggest and it's going to have the most. Most. New things in it because they have the space to do it. So they've really. Aimed for the fences in this one and all this is clear U D C. We have the funding in place. The project will go out on the street for R F P in. Latter part of July, August, hopefully we'll find a contractor by mid September. And construction will start pretty quickly. I know it looks like a lot. This is exterior kind of. You know, excavation work is most of it, which will go actually pretty quickly. There's not a lot of concrete dealt here. So. A lot of this work will go fast. And then in December is when they want to try and plant the the landscaping. Bushes and trees because that is really one of the premium times to plant it because it's.
Is there a species list already?
I think in your packet, if you look, I think. On the last page there are.
Are they all native?
Pictures of the trees. Yeah, you don't see them. It's in your packet. If you look at my document, it's all blocked out because I think they didn't want to distract them.
Oh, okay.
So you see all those.
Fine.
Any questions? It's an exciting thing that we've been working on. I'm hoping that we can do some more stuff with it. So I'll keep you posted.
Cool.
Yep, that looks great. Emily, we can move on to governance. You've got some.
Things to go today. Yes. So the application, so Ms. Burton leaving after this fiscal year, this meeting, I think is her last one. Will be welcoming a new member to the board. The applications of boards and commissions. Runs accepts new applications to boards in the city quarterly. This quarter's application ended on June fifteenth. And at that time we had received one application, which was a little bit of surprise, but. The good news was that the application came from a very strong, it was a very strong application. Ms. Maria Scott is a volunteer at the Broad Rock Library. She was encouraged to. Submit application by Ms. Heather Montgomery. The director at that branch. She volunteers in their after school program, which is. Especially geared towards Spanish speaking families. Ms. Scott is a retired bilingual educator. So she brings that experience and also that connection. Which I think is something that is. Is really weird welcome to this board. Because the government, so the original plan had been to discuss applications in this meeting. Because Government Operations, which is the City Council Committee, which. Does the first pass and then recommends to the Greater City Council. Because they meet this afternoon, like in a couple of minutes, their meeting starts. We decided that given that we had one application, it was a strong application to just go ahead and. Put in our recommendation for the approval of that application. Rather than risk delaying. By another quarter. Because I think the next time we'd get a chance would be end of September.
Yeah, a copy of her application went out in the meeting packet that everyone should have gotten. And she is, it's very well qualified. And I think Emily and I spoke, Emily and Chris spoke, I think. Scott, you were included. So I, we sort of did an informal executive committee discussion. I've been said we thought she'd. Really filled bill it nicely. So.
Yep. And I spoke with her. She's a lovely person. I'm really excited. Since we made that recommendation to. To the Government Operations Committee, we did receive another application from Ms. Ms. Hins, who had been at our meeting last month. Also a strong applicant. And she's doing great work also at the Broad Rock Library. So we're really, really. It's, we're very lucky to have such kind of engaged volunteers from from the eighth district and Broad Rock Library. But we did make the, we did decide to stick with the original recommendation that we had made. To Government Operations. So they will meet today. And ultimately it is up to that committee to pass it on to City Council and then City Council makes the appointment. And I believe that that would happen in July. Is that correct, Jenna? Okay, so at their July, the July City Council meeting would be when. We really were an appointment is finalized. And the decision is made. But we do have both applications in the packet. I don't. I think since we've already made the the recommendation, I don't know that it's worth. Discussing, but are there any other questions about? That process or or anything else?
So we can't have that?
No.
We don't have, unless someone needs to leave.
We do not have two positions. We have.
That is, that is, that is an issue of the board size. We. On the other hand, she can continue working as volunteers. She can actually even serve if there's a need after. We get through the July restructuring of committees and so on. You, one can be. Put on boards or committees within the board here without being a board member. So if she wanted to help out on specific things, particularly related to Broad Rock maybe, or just. Whatever the expertise might might best fit. She could still do some of that. And then if a spot comes up down the road, obviously she'd be considered for that. But and and this has happened. I look around the room and I think it pretty much happened with every one of our board members. They were chosen, but there were other applicants who we just couldn't take them all at once. You know, and that's just the the way it is. We were wonderfully blessed to have people who want to be on the board. And we just can't take them all. So we'll try to use them in other ways and. Like I said, we we do appreciate her coming out and meeting and it's unfortunate that we couldn't put it out to a vote. Before this, the their meeting at one o'clock today, but. When Emily and I quit last week, we only had the one application also. And it was, yes, she meets the bill and we're we're going with her. So. Everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. And again, I'd like to thank Emily for doing a great job. This is not. It has not been as easy as it has been in some previous years, I think, for some reason on it. I think the city process. Sort of caught us. Without without time. I mean, I don't think we've ever had that. Okay, well, your meeting is going to end at one o'clock and our meeting is going to start then. And we hope you'll have the recommendation and before.
To the one o'clock meeting. Yes, we have made our recommendation and that will be passed along.
And we can't say that they're going to follow it, but it's pretty traditional that they will take our. Recommendation into consideration. And and the council, once it gets through that group, the council almost always goes forward. So I think we should be joined, having her join us in July probably. I would think. Jenna?
Yeah.
Right, what I was looking at. So, okay. The other thing I'm going to mention, did you want to talk other things?
Oh, just. So every two years we vote on the executive committee. Is that, so the chair and vice chair. That happens after the end of the city's fiscal year. So that election would happen at our next meeting in July.
That that was all I was going to say. So I I was thinking it was today and I probably said that to a couple of people. It's actually next month's meeting that that will be voting on that. So. Okay, anything else from governance? Okay, the only unfinished business I have is sort of one of those bittersweet type of thing. And and that is, I'd like to really thank Mr. Burton for her just outstanding. Support of R P L, her service to the library over these last eight years. Barbara and Gail are the two board members who were here when I came on about seven years ago, seven and a half years ago, maybe. And and they have been for me just wonderfully helpful as far as letting me see how things are done. And and after I became chair, fantastic about stepping in and doing anything they were asked to. And Barbara has, I think, had probably the most consistent attendance record of any board member. At least in the last eight, eight or nine years. She has just been here and just. Been a tremendous asset to the library, to the board and to the community that she comes from. It's just wonderful. And we look around this and we see everyone from, most of us from different districts. You know, this is fantastic. She's she's been wonderful in that and we're going to miss her a lot. I I will point out that Gail also went through this a few years back and Gail's back with us. So maybe Barbara will be seeing you here again. Wouldn't wouldn't upset me at all. But we wanted to thank you and have a little something to. To give you and it's it's nothing that can actually compensate you for all of the one for you know, but thank you, Barbara.
Thank you so much. It really has been my privilege to serve. I have really, it has been a learning process and I'm really appreciative of that. So I thank you. And I told my children, I said, I'm getting ready to leave town at one o'clock. I said, I've got to be there. I said, I'm sure I'm going to be recognized. I'm just.
Well, I didn't, I hope I didn't talk too long. I I sometimes say that.
Afternoon to go visit my daughter. So and I, but and it really was, it was so interesting because when I, when I got, when I learned of, because I think one of the things that happens with. Some of the city boards, citizens don't really know how you can participate. And luckily, our city council person is doing a really good job of getting all of the board vacancies out to the third district. But I couldn't get her, she she didn't jump on board for the, she, that wasn't, that didn't rise to the same level of some of the other boards. But it, but it it really is important for citizens to know that there are opportunities out there for them. So I thank you all. And I know you guys have been doing good work. So I'll just keep my eyes peeled to see what it is you all continue to do. Yes, I will.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Hey, uh so any new business? I don't have any. Okay, um then I'm gonna ask for a motion that we adjourn.
Adjourn.
Yeah, on a second. Yeah, Garrett on paper I. We are adjourned. Uh next month, we are at.